We good?
Yes, sir.
All right, call the work session to order. Request for proposals, project 25 Public Safety Radio Systems. Nikki?
So in front of you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. And thank you for letting me Skype in. I'm actually attending the Virginia Afco State Conference in Roanoke, Virginia. So I appreciate you letting me Skype in to do the work session today. But in front of you, I know that the RFP has been delivered to you for the Land Mobile Radio, the LMR system, which is to replace the 911 radio system and the sheriff's office radio system and to combine us onto one radio system as well as integrate parts and paths forward for the broadband system. So with that being said, are there any questions about the RFP or the material that was presented in front of you?
I spoke with Stephanie earlier today and gave her some questions or issues.
I forwarded them to Nikki and to our consultant with federal engineering. Would you want to go through those? Or?
Doesn't matter, I mean, they're, as you wish.
We've got an hour.
The first few that-
Even I won't take an hour, but I'll try.
The first few that we discussed were typos and they are being corrected by Mike Harper. I believe on page 44, Nikki, do you have the RFP in front of you?
Yeah, I do, now you can have the page off there.
Sure, page 44 subsection D. And Mr. White might be able to clarify his question.
We end on 28.
Yeah, we end on 20, 28.
We don't have paper copies of the spec. I have it on my box here. Well, the general question, actually, we don't, you don't need the paper for this. There's a section in here that recognizes the fact that this solicitation is ahead of the building project. And so it contemplates that we're going to get eight new consoles and we're going to put, help me Nikki if I get the numbers wrong, but I think it's three in this building and two in the sheriff's office and then whole three in storage until such time as the building is ready and then relocate or locate all eight of them in the building. And the only question I asked was, is there any way to do that in a smarter, less costly, less cumbersome way? It's difficult to guess because we don't really know the schedule of the building unless Kurt has some information there. But it just, it's an issue I wanted to discuss for a little bit to make us all aware that that's the way we're having to do it and it might be the best answer of all those out there.
My question would be, why would we have to put them here first and we just initially install them in the building?
The building might not be ready in time, that's, it's a question of timing.
Well, yeah, and what's the timing issue?
So the actual reason behind why we're doing this is the radio consoles in the 911 center and the radio consoles in the sheriff's office reach end of life December 31st, 2018. We know that the building will not be ready by then. So we do have to replace the equipment that we have today before we have a new building. So that's why you see that we'll be replacing the three consoles, the 911 center, the two positions at the sheriff's office. We've got the option of buying all eight at once or doing five and then purchasing the next three when we move into the building. What gives us an opportunity though with purchasing eight at the same time is that I've got to have the equipment that's not being used to stand up a new building. So we'll have three, we'll purchase three to replace not in here in 911 before December 2018, we'll purchase two to replace the sheriff's office before December 2018. And then we'll purchase three more of which, when we're building the new building and it comes to cut over, I've now got three spare consoles so to speak that I can put in the building and move people to actual physical equipment that's already there in the building. I'm not having to take down a position from the sheriff's office or the 911 center to move equipment. So that was the best way forward that we saw to meet the end of life deadline and get the timing right on the building and allow the cut over to be a little bit more seamless.
All right, I have a question then, on end of life, does it just die or is it just end of support life?
It's end of life, end of support, end of parts. It would be the eBay scenario.
Well, the original discussion was that this 911 center, these consoles would stay-
As a backup.
As a backup. What are we going to do if we get new consoles for them here?
And then have to move them out.
And then move them out, what are we going to do for consoles in this building?
So we would do something a little bit different. You don't have to have a full stand-up console so to speak. You can do it with a desktop mobile, there's remote type apps, there's IP-based type stuff. So how my radio system is today is not tomorrow. As long as I've got an IP-type, an IP address to tie back into my radio system, I can download the software onto a laptop, my laptop right here, and then would be able to tie into the radio system and have a dispatch console right in front of me without needing all the equipment.
How risky is taking those existing consoles beyond December 2018?
With Motorola coming out and saying, and we, and the county has known this since about 2011, I remember it was one of the first things that hit me. So this was posted in 2011 and was one of the driving discussions for the radio system. Again, it puts us, I call it the eBay scenario where there is no spare parts, the manufacturer's not supporting this anymore and we're going out to eBay to find pieces of stuff free because it's no longer been a supported, the software's not supported, hardware's not supported, you can't buy any of the parts anymore.
Do we have that many failures so that those, we would be seeing these things going down regularly?
So, not really, but with it being public safety mission critical, it's not a recommendation I would bring to the board to let a piece of equipment. We don't, we're not saving any money by, we still have to buy eight consoles and whether we buy them before 2018 or after 2018 does not save us or increase the cost by any means. We still have to put out the money for eight consoles, be it today or when we have a new building.
It wasn't so much the cost of buying the consoles, but installing them here and then having to uninstall them and install them somewhere else. So you've got two installation costs and uninstallation costs for five of them.
No, I completely, completely understand some of the concerns with that. And unfortunately, I think it's just the cost of doing business with the timing with the building, end of life cycles, that we know this and we can be, we can be responsible for that and know that this is part of the project. Most of it is just networking more than anything, you know, hooking PCs up to network. But yes, there is, if we do that, we're still looking at the 911 phones would be treated the same way, we still pull 911 phones from out of here, we still pull CAD PCs. So either way, we're going to be removing equipment from both dispatch facilities.
Nikki, I'm a little bewildered by, on the one hand, we're worried about these consoles going down, but on the other hand, the complete absence of a console is not a problem because we can just use a PC. So I'm sensing a contradiction there in the logic.
Okay. So the radio system we're on today is not the IP-based radio system. I have to have a radio antenna that is hooked to a computer. Moving forward with our new radio system, it is IP-based. So it's a completely, completely different system from what we have today. So unfortunately, today I'm tied to physical equipment. Tomorrow going forward, if we get the new radio system up and running, I'm not as physically tied to some equipment because I can use IP addresses to network back into a radio system. A P25 system, the best way to think about it is an IP-based network that can deliver radio through the PCs at the end of the day.
So what is the, what is the advantage then? What do the consoles give us that a laptop doesn't give us just for everyday operation?
Basically, it's how you would run your media dispatcher, dispatch center. Obviously, if you're IPing into a system, you're relying on the internet and we don't want to be reliant on the internet. Does it work for backup condition? Absolutely, hopefully the internet hasn't gone down. But it's capacity, do I get to bring all the full functionality with me on the radio system? And the consoles will allow us to do that. The consoles will also tie into part of the 911 and how that system's set up and the ability to get 911 calls as well as ability to be on the radio at the same time. We're all in a link together.
So the system that we've got right now, if we were to just, you know, let's say that we didn't change anything and we just magically jumped from there over to the new building and we locked the door on the current 911 center, in an emergency, would we be able to come back and use that equipment if the, if the new, if the new building went down?
No, not at all. The radio equipment in this old building and the sheriff's office is not compatible with the future stuff.
So you couldn't, you couldn't flip a switch and go back to, go back to this system?
No, so that's why, the other thing with the new consoles too, the new consoles can work backwards and they can work backwards. So the new, the new consoles would be able, we would be able to use them on the system that we have today and then also the new consoles will be our P25 compliant, so we can use them on the equipment and the system tomorrow. There's not the capability of going backwards or forwards. The equipment we have today can only work on the system we have today.
Okay. And how did we arrive at eight consoles? Why is there, since we've got three and since we've got a total of five now, why do, what is, what was the reason we were going with eight?
So we have five positions total for dispatch staff today. And if we only built five positions, then we can only have five seats. And we've done some preliminary discussions that we realized that minimum staffing is probably going to be 16 communications offices, which is four shifts of four. So on a normal day, you're going to have four people. We didn't want to land lock us into only having one extra booth position because when these crises do happen, we need to be able to double our staff. We also were trying to plan the 20 or 30 years and give ourselves the good growth. Because if we have four dispatches today, probably in five, 10 years, we'll have five dispatches. Also, positions go down, that's the nature of the deal to just business, computers break. So we don't want to be in a position, again, if I just have five positions, one goes down for a build, if something happens, I can't call anybody in. So we were trying to think past that and forward think a little bit more and that's where we came up with eight, is that we know that we can double our staffing capacity.
Nikki, I'm a little lost with that last scenario. Because you said that this particular center could be run off of just a laptop.
On the new system.
Right, okay. So if a position goes down, you can't just take a laptop and have that position up and running until it's repaired?
We would prefer for the 911 center to be a fully functional dispatch console position. We would want the equipment to be the same. The reason for keeping the 911, the other down here in the basement is simply to just be, it's to work in backup conditions.
How much do these, how much would each position cost roughly? Do you?
Probably in the ballpark, 200 to 250 for each, and that's thousand of each position.
Okay, so what is the risk of installing positions, then uninstalling them and moving them and reinstalling? That's where my real concern is, is if you're talking 200, $250,000 per position, you're talking, let's just say, 750,000 just for, that we are risking moving the hardware after it's been installed. That's my biggest concern, is breaking something we go to move.
If you do it controlled, I don't think that, I think there's actually going to be less risk than the newer building because you've got to have proper cabling and proper wiring than when we install it here. For us, the equipment that gets moved is PCs, a server and the actual radio desktop console themselves. So could things get dropped? Absolutely, but nothing's going to, you know, it would just, it's just moving software and hardware from one room to another.
On your, on your concept or on your discussion of why we needed eight, I mean, I could understand if you've got four positions having a fifth console available. But if you're looking to growth out in 10, 15 years, wouldn't the technologies be changing for those other consoles that we don't need for expansion right away?
It's possible. Again, we were looking more at it that we want, this is a fully functioning 911 center, that we don't want the dispatcher having to worry, are they on a laptop that doesn't give them the full functionality or capability that a console does, but simply because I've had an electric issue on one of my positions, they've now lost functionality.
Well, that's why I was saying, if you kept, if you say you're going to need four on a routine basis, I can understand having a fifth console as a backup, but I'm not sure that the other three consoles for growth wouldn't be outdated by the time you need it for the growth.
And again, it was, I would be even concerned of doing five positions because we have seen it that we need more than, we need to be able to expand our staff. You know, could I, I'll be honest, could I live with six positions that are fully, a full position? Absolutely. Because that gives you, that gives you the flexibility, now I can bring two more people in to answer phone calls, basically is what happens when these emergencies do happen.
Well, we could do that and also tie in laptops too, right?
So, yeah, we could do, we could do several different things. We could do six fully functional consoles and then do two more with laptop type equipment. We've got some room to wiggle there, so we, could we stand up two more positions and not make them as fully functional until we need them? But, you know, are we also, so yes, we've got some different options that we could work with there.
Well, I'm just thinking, I would certainly feel that you ought to have the space for eight if you're going to talk about growth for 20 or 30 years. But I'm not sure that you actually need to have the consoles if you don't need them near term. So having two spares instead of one might be worth the added reliability, but I'm not sure that another $400,000 to $500,000 worth of consoles that might become obsolete by the time you need them. It just seemed to me to be something that we could defer.
The other aspect is, I didn't find how we've asked the bidders to handle this, this item of installing and then moving. Is there, because in the system testing section back 100, page 150 or wherever it is, it doesn't speak to the moving. So maybe Stephanie, you know, is, how is this handled from a bidding? If I were a bidder and I read this, how would you expect me to respond? Is there a cost section that would deal with this or, because it's not part of the system testing, installation and testing section, at least I didn't find it. I mean, that doesn't mean it isn't there, but there's, like on page 113, there's a system installation requirement and it talks about, it has to be done by authorized, factory authorized people and have to follow the manufacturer's guideline, you know, the things you expect to see there. Keep the work sites neat, you know, I mean, it's, it's a fairly comprehensive list of things, but I didn't, I didn't see anything that directly instructed the bidders on this, this narrow topic of needing to move them. I mean, is that, is that such a trivial item that they're not going to want to price it in or I just?
Unfortunately, I'm unable to answer that. Federal wrote the technical specs. Nikki, do you know if that, if they think that's included in this original or is that something we were contract for them at a later date under our annual agreement?
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the radio vendor themselves probably doing the move, it would be our local radio shop doing the move for us. So once the system is installed and has been tested, it doesn't matter where the consoles are actually, because that doesn't change the radio coverage, it doesn't change the channel capacity, it just changes physically where the signal is being received. That's, again, if we're looking at just doing a couple of extra positions at the center, we can test that, but once we know the system's up and running, once we move, the moving of equipment would fall under the local radio shop and that's why it's not in the RFP, because that's who would do it. And we don't know who our local radio shop's going to be, because we don't know who our vendor's going to be.
Right, right. Okay, so it's, it would be a separate arrangement.
Yeah, it would be a separate task that would fall under the moving equipment. Hi, Tada.
Any other questions about the consoles?
I have another, another question or set of questions that deals with towers, if you want to.
On page 75.
Yeah, if you want to.
Sure, absolutely.
Move to that one unless there's something else. We, I've had several discussions with Nikki and Stephanie and the folks from Federal on the tower question, trying to get, you know, as, in addition to the coverage and reliability that we need for the radio system to, you know, get as much of a head start on a broadband initiative as we can out of the tower system. And it's not, it doesn't make sense to try to do a single procurement to buy all of that capability at one time because you're having to layer organizations on top of each other and pay for primes and subs and system integrators and things like that. But having said that, I think we found a reasonable position to take with respect to the towers, to at least set them up to be dual-purposed. The question that I wanted to raise with the board and everyone for that matter is, how do we communicate what our expectations are with respect to the towers? We have statements in here now that say our preference is for new towers located on, three parameters, new-
What page are you on?
I'm sorry, page 75.
Subsection M and N.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Subsection N.
N, and I'm talking about number, item number one. Sorry, I forgot to. And, and it says that we prefer new sites on county facilities connected to the fiber net. So those are the three parameters that we express as a preference. But then it, it offers three other opportunities. That's item one if you're on that page 75. One is a new site that is on county facilities but not connected to the broadband. Three is an existing site that we use but don't own and not connected to the broadband. And four would be towers out there that we're not using but potentially could use. But the question that I, that I finally want to get to is this. I'm inclined to say that we should ask the bidders to propose as sort of the base case, all new towers, all on county property, all hooked to broadband. That's sort of base case number one. And then where there, where that doesn't work well, doesn't give us the coverage or the reliability or is so cost prohibitive that it's crazy, then they bid as options, either any combination of two, three and four, or one and or two and or three and or four. Now that, that's not exactly the instruction we're giving here now. At least it's not as direct as I just stated it, but it seems to me that at a minimum we want a look at what would it cost to do all new, all county sites, all broadband? Now, we might not be able to afford that, it could be crazy. But I think we need that to understand it as we then have to make decisions about, okay, what mix of other kind of towers at other sites and other combinations should-
But would you want that first priority to make sure that covers all the LMR?
Well, that's a requirement no matter what.
Okay, so you got to do that.
You got to do that.
And then the, then the alternatives with regard to what coverage you get for broadband?
Correct. But it's also a mix of, mixing of cost. I mean, it might be more cost effective to use an existing tower, even though we don't own it, we have to pay rent on it and these kind of things. It still could be something that is cost effective enough that we would want to include that in the mix and possibly have a tower that isn't connected to the fiber.
But, but only for broadband, not for LMR?
No, only for LMR, not for broadband.
Broadband is not included in the solicitation.
That's right, broadband's not in here directly.
Okay, all right.
We will take whatever.
So Jim, are you saying in effect, the county's preferred order of site selection is newer greenfield sites located at county facilities with connectivity to county's planned fiber network, period? And then list, if this is not possible, one, two, three? Take, take the current one and not make it one, make it-
Make it the spec.
Make it the spec, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm, that's the issue on the table.
No, I think that makes sense. Because it makes it a little clearer what we're aiming for.
But I, but I, there are other people in the audience that probably have to comment about that and I'm inviting comment, I'm not, I'm not putting this out there as a must-have, but it seems to me that, that all things considered, if, at a reasonable cost, we can get number one as sort of the baseline.
Do we consider-
That gets us along a path that we want to-
Do we consider fiber optic extensions beyond the current as a part of that mix? To achieve the number one criteria?
And that could be at the number two. Number two is contemplating, I'm sorry, not number, yes, yeah, you're right. Number two says without fiber. I mean, we, my concern is this, we need to carefully instruct the bidders on this matter because this is, this has, you know, substantial implications, not only for the radio system, but also for how much progress we make toward the broadband piece. And Federal might need to weigh in on this and tell me I'm, this is ludicrous.
Some things we've done in the past, particularly, I can think of the EDA with their recent pad site project, is we requested, in that case it was bids, this could be proposals with pricing, but give us this option with pricing and we, you know, that's our preference, but then also give us these other with pricing and we reserve the right to choose whichever combination best meets our needs.
And that would be my recommendation is, because we don't know enough at this point to force them to do number one and only number one. We just don't have enough information.
Mr. White, as I, as I look at the RFP and I look at C above it, it says, and it's, I agree, it's a little confusing and hopefully my phone's giving me the right thing, but as I'm looking at it, it says, responding to a proposed system design that meets or exceeds the county's coverage requirements using existing sites or newly developed tower sites. So I think C points them in a direction you want them to go and then kind of, it kind of alters off of that with D below that.
And that, and that's the issue, is that I think we have to be careful how we slice this so that we can, we have decision packages that we can discreetly follow and understand and price and, and that's really my objective. My objective is not to prejudge the answer, it's to get the information package that we can, we can make an informed decision.
If we request all or a combination and they just have that language where we reserve the right to pick and choose and combine as we see fit, we could talk to Federal about clarifying that.
And it might be that number one is valuable enough for us that we, that if there's a premium, that can be justified and given what we're trying to accomplish. that, that, that can be justified in given what we're trying to accomplish. It also could be a premium that's beyond what we're willing to, and that's what we need to, to determine. I guess that's why I'm sort of, this sounds like a, being down in the weeds, and I guess to some extent it is down in the weeds, but it, it, it has some fairly major implications, not only on the number of towers, because I believe that if we, if we focus on number one, uh, as, as sort of the base case or the desirable, it probably will increase the number of towers. You know, it won't double it, but it, it, it could add a tower or two. And we did, as you might remember, we had a little bit of that conversation with Federal. And they were sort of, but there's some benefits to that in terms of in-building coverage and other kinda things. And so I, I just wanna make sure that we're in this area particularly, because I think we are in the rest of the RFP. We're very precise as to what we're looking for as, as packages to, to, to allow us to make informed decisions. This was an area that sorta didn't quite get there.
So we wanna be precise in the information to make decisions we're not sure we wanna make yet.
At least that.
Okay, alright.
And that's why I'm sort of waving and rambling is I, I don't, you know, I don't have the precise language to offer up, but, but I, I, I think it starts with number one as defined here becoming sort of the, the base case that we would like to have them bid. And then we, we venture off of that based on pricing and other considerations.
When, uh, when they do that, let's say they come in with a, a baseline and then three or four options, uh, beyond that. And we should get from them the, the, the performance on, on LMR.
For all, for any option they propose, yes.
Yeah, okay. But when we say, alright, now, we take those options and we wanna look at their potential for broadband?
It's a separate effort.
But that's a separate effort with it, not with this group, but back to Federal?
Probably back to Federal, because they would take, that would, that would locate the towers and give us the height. And then from that, Federal or others could go in and, and run the propagation for broadband.
That would be part of our specs for the broadband solicitation.
Correct, correct, but it, it, again, it's not, it's not embedded in this.
Okay.
But it, and that's where the trick is, is we, we wanna get as much out of these towers as we can. Obviously, step one is you meet the LMR specs, no issues, no, no if, ands, or buts. They're pretty crisp, they're pretty tough, and you gotta meet them. Uh, but if we can, you know, shift a little bit this way or that way.
And buy more broad.
And, and get more broadband capability and may, and frankly, even better, uh, LMR capability. Because, you know, if, if, if an extra tower or two is in the right place, you do gain something potentially valuable, particularly in-building, portable in-building, uh, on the, on the LMR side. So, uh, it, it's, it's not, it's not just a broadband play, but it, it is importantly a broadband play. I, I, I mean. That's my story and I'm sticking to it for the moment at least, until Federal. I don't, Nikki, is that, I mean, that seems to fit with other conversations we've had, you and I and with Federal.
Yeah, I think our intent is the same. The language doesn't match our intent strong enough, um, but I, I, I see exactly what you're asking for. And I think that's a pretty easy fix with, with the language. And I'm sure I can get with Stephanie and Federal and get that taken care of pretty soon.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I'm more curious than anything else. On page ninety-five, the generator. Is there a reason for LP or natural gas versus diesel?
A reason for something, I apologize.
Oh, is there a reason for the generators to be LP or natural gas versus diesel?
Um, not that I'm aware of. We, we could do either or.
Well, I.
As long as we've got a fuel tank.
Well, and typically, your diesel, unless things have changed, you can take a, a properly sized diesel tank that's going to perform for a longer period of time than a propane. You're gonna have to have a humongous propane tank, John?
The only thing I'd say about diesel is the, um, is fuel setting for that length of time.
Right, okay.
That would be my greatest concern.
Okay.
That's, yeah, that's what I've heard with, with generating, generator people is that unless you're gonna be using this a lot, diesel is not the best way to go.
It actually grows an algae, believe me.
Right, that's, okay, I was just, just curious because, um.
Which probably doesn't flow through the injectors very well.
They don't like it a bit.
Not, not one single bit. So it's, it's more of a, a maintenance issue than, than anything. Okay, and that's, and that's.
And I think reliability.
They'll have to add DEF in because it'll be new.
When you need it, when you need it, you need it, so.
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely.
And we don't hope that it'll be running a lot in frozen weather.
No, that was just curiosity question more than anything else.
Did, did you get a response from, from Federal in the back hall, issues of the three hundred versus the one fifty and all that? We don't, we don't need to go into it, it's just.
Yes, sir, I believe you were correct, and he made the change, it was his typo.
Okay. That's all I have. Well, the, the, the other matter is, is the one that we touched on when we talked about the consoles is, is the matter of timing. You know, the. My, my feeling is there's enough uncertainty about the timing of the building that we, we almost have to decouple this project from that project. At least initially. I mean, it maybe it'd be nice to have them sort of link up at some point and be on the same timeframe. But, I mean, Kurt, do you have any kind of a notional, uh, milestone in, in, in your mind for, for the building?
No, we're, we're working on it, we're on schedule, but I don't have it yet, so maybe just.
I mean, there.
Unfortunately, I think you're a hundred percent correct.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I guess my, my only hand wringing there was it would, the, the more we can make these schedules. Coincide, the, the, the better the outcome by lots of measures. And, and I, I just don't know how much of that we can accomplish. I'm, I'm not for a second suggesting we hold up the release of this solicitation for the building. I, I'm certainly not going there, but I think it's, you know, where there are opportunities to make them coincide better or, you know.
What was the original, what was the original date?
Uh, mid twenty nineteen.
Mid twenty nineteen? Well, we're certainly gonna be later than that, so. I mean, we're off by.
Probably a year.
A year, probably more than we're off by a couple of months, so.
Discussions we've had is one, uh, so far with regard to installing the consoles in the existing, uh, centers versus deferring them until the, for the year, I don't think that's, I think that question is resolved by, by installing them where we have. The other question is the number of consoles. Do we really need to go to eight?
How is the, how is that bid? Is it bid as a, as a block of eight or is it bid it as five plus three or five plus, plus, plus one, plus one, plus one? Or have, I, I didn't.
We can, we can get a pricing on what one console would, um, what one console would cost us. We can break it out per unit.
But should we not, should we not pick a number, whether it's five or six, I don't know, but let's just say six for the moment, and ask for a bid on six and then a bid of plus one, maybe plus two?
Yeah, we could, we could change it and change the language into six and then ask them for the pricing per unit. So if we wanted to go back and look and see what eight would be, then we, we've got that, that figure there.
Well, I'd like to see six and eight as opposed to just, uh, one, one, because, uh, there, I think you're gonna get your best bargains then. And then we'd understand the difference between six and eight and see whether we'd rather put that into the building or something else. Uh, because, uh, if it's not something that we would need for reliability over the next few years, uh, I'm more concerned about what happens, uh, in the ten to fifteen-year period in terms of technology.
Nikki, these, these consoles that we're gonna be getting, uh, how, how long has that technology been around?
P twenty-five technology has been around for, for, for several years. Um, it's, it's growing by leaps and bounds. It's not growing by leaps and bounds, it's more what IP networks can do today than they can do in the past.
Yeah, the IP technology's been around.
What, the, the one good thing about a P twenty-five system is that once you buy it, there's, there's not a lot of, you don't ever have to really, like what we're doing today, re-heave it up all it, because it's, um, IP software. So you're replacing servers as opposed to physical hardware, which is a little bit different. Um.
It's, I wasn't thinking so much that the technology in terms of P twenty-five had changed, but, uh, how it's implemented in terms of the hardware and the, uh, hardware and software to build on that, uh, we're, you know, we're bringing the price down on various components, uh, year after year. And I would rather not get ourselves locked into something for an extra fifteen to twenty years just because, uh, we could, you know, I mean, if the price difference isn't that much, okay. But if it's a significant price difference, I think.
Again, with, with, with P twenty-five systems though, uh, the, if something changes next year in technology, you don't have to replace everything, you simply just have to upgrade software, um.
That's the key difference.
Which we can't do today. Um, so it's a little bit different way of, of thinking about it. Um, almost like when Microsoft, when Windows, when they come out with a new Windows update, you know, yesterday we all had what, office, you know, two thousand and eight, and then today we had two thousand and ten, but we didn't have to go buy a new PC. Um, and that's kind of the same way P, um, the P twenty-five systems work, that you can do those upgrades and keep a lot of the same equipment in place. Um, I can do a little bit more research though for you, um, also. Uh, Mr. Venders actually will be here in Roanoke, uh, so, so that's okay with the board. Um, I'll ask you a few more questions and see if I can get some, some, some better answers for you.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, even the PC we get, uh, in, uh, although I can upgrade it with new software, at some point, the, uh, the capabilities you're asking for and the functions you're asking for begin to overstress the existing, uh, hardware.
Yeah, well, I.
Right, and, and we, we see that all the time in, um, IT, and, um, um, already just, um, we've actually already deployed and have been, um, as a strategic plan to even today keeping the, the two dispatch centers, uh, working and functioning. So we're already seeing that and doing that today. For us, that's normal day-to-day business. Um, so, so, so we already have that, um, uh, on our radar more than anything. So yes, we're gonna have to replace PCs because our computers and after five years, when they've been on twenty-four seven three sixty-five, they die.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with, with what Lee said. I mean, I, I think we, we build the space there for, for, uh, for expansion, but I, I, it's a hard sell for me to, to buy the, the equipment for something we may need in fifteen or twenty years.
Yeah, I mean, and.
And who knows what we're gonna be doing in fifteen or twenty years?
And I would even include, uh, as they're wiring the, uh, the nine-one-one center, that in fact, uh, they've got, uh, adequate wiring to support more consoles without necessarily having to buy them.
Yeah, that, when, when we're looking at building the building, um, even if we don't say necessarily put a piece of equipment in, we, we want the building to be completely pre-wired, um, so, so it's done.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I'll state the obvious, half million dollars could come in very handy here in, in getting this overall job done, so.
Absolutely.
It's, it's not, you know.
That's what I was saying. Uh, I'd rather make sure that we, the building is gonna be around for many years. That may be the better place to put that half million.
And we do have some flexibility there, you know, in the, in terms of the portable radios. There's, there's a buy, but it doesn't have to be, you know, you buy one for every single user on day one. You know, some of this can be, can be throttled and it, and it's being priced so that it can be throttled, uh, if, if we.
And that's also something we could do with the consoles. If you wanted me to change it to get pricing for six, we can always include language that if we enter negotiations with the top-ranked vendor and we decide, wait, we really want eight, we can always ask them for the pricing at that time. Or we could ask for eight and scale back to six. I can add that language that we reserve.
Yeah, just understanding the difference. I mean, if the difference is a hundred thousand, not much, but the difference is half a million, that's significant.
So would you like six, pricing for six and then a cost per unit? So you can see.
Pricing for six and pricing for eight.
Okay.
I think that's the right. That would, that would probably get us the best unit price.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that covers us with some excess capacity, but still gives us room to operate.
Since you're the guy coming up with all the old, the, the ideas, the things we ought to look at, you got any more?
No, that's.
Well, he is the engineer.
I know, and, uh.
No, no, I.
Really appreciate that.
I, I classified myself as an antique engineer, there's a big difference. Emphasis on that.
That's why we got Nikki and everybody else out there. Weeds guy, so.
Well, I, it, it was, this is a, an interesting challenge because we're, we're, we're trying to accomplish as much as we can with the same bucket of dollars and, uh, you don't want one to screw the other up, obviously. So you can, you can only push so far and then you have to, if you can get close to that line, you, you have to declare victory and quit. I think, and I think that's where we are. I mean, the, if, if you're.
Look at it, allows us for another six months.
Well, i- i- in fact, out of a two-hundred-and-eight-page document, we focused most of our discussion on two pages. The, the other two-hundred-and-seven or six pages are, you know, basically ready to go, I think, with, with just some really little, I mean, I had a list of small things that I gave to Stephanie earlier today, but that, they really were edits.
So with the, the changes that, um, have been requested this evening, the seeing the pricing for the six consoles and the eight consoles, clarifying, uh, the page seventy-five where it talks about our, our base scenario and then some combination, um.
With towers.
Yes, sir. Um, and those minor edits that you pointed out earlier, is the board comfortable with releasing after those edits have been made? Or would you like to see it again before we go out? We had preliminarily scheduled to release this on November second, uh, with having proposals due January eleventh. But we're open to whatever you're comfortable with.
Jim, would you like to look at that thing on the towers again?
Or would you like me to send you a copy, Mr. Wade, before it goes out?
I'd be happy to, to look at the word.
The way you have, uh, reviewed it, I mean, if you were comfortable with it, I would be certain to be comfortable with it.
Damn it, thank God. I'd be happy to look at it again. I mean, they could just, we, Mike and I did this once before. He, he had some language and he, he just emailed it to me and we had a phone call and worked out a couple of details and, you know, I'd be happy to do that again, okay?
Okay, I will get with Mike tomorrow to make these edits and make sure you get a copy. And if you're satisfied, we'll go ahead and release on the second.
She thinks a lot, guys.
You, you, you've taken us to the, through the weeds several times. We'll rely on you there.
I'm perfectly willing to do that.
Is there anything else that Nikki and I can follow up on for anyone regarding this solicitation?
Thank you for a lot of work, both of you.
All of you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the whole team, they've really done a great job. I mean, I, I, I think the important point is literally out of a two-hundred-and-eight-page document, we just spent our time on two pages. That, that's very telling, you guys did a great job, especially you, Nikki, as the leader.
No, I thank, I thank the team.
I wonder why I'm not on the little box down there?
You're too far to the left.
Yeah, I was, I was. That's what you're promised.
You move to the right, you're not gonna be better off.
I'm just saying, you know.
I'm too far to the left. No one's ever told me that before.
But you are, you're, look at your, I, I can't even reach you, you're so far.
That'll go down in your epitaph.
Alright, thank you, Nikki.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for setting this up.
This guy, I appreciate it.
Enjoy your evening.
Thank you, I will do.
I know that sound.
You know, we should do that a lot more often, 'cause I get tired of listening to somebody, just hit the button, they're going. Oh, that's what they wanna do with us. Yeah.
Okay. Well.
Okay.
In case.
We did it.
Take a ten-minute, nine-minute recess or whatever. We live. Okay. Like call a meeting to order, if you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, before we begin, I know there's one addition. Well, before we begin, I know there's one addition, which would be five A, and that's acceptance of an aviation easement. Are there any other changes or additions?
Motion to approve as a modified.
Okay, I have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that carries five zero. First thing on the agenda then would be special presentations and appearances. Orange County Public Schools proposed Porterfield Park mobile restroom project. Dr. Tanner.
I actually asked Mr. Berry and Mr. Arnold, who've been the primary contacts on this project, to share with you detailed information, um, that we've discussed with our board that led to this recommendation. So these gentlemen are gonna be up. We did create one chart, we didn't have it as a link out, so if you want it later, we can forward it to you. But, um, Bill has that to walk you through some of the exact figures because we thought it would be helpful for you as a reference point. So I'm gonna let Bill go and you don't need to stare at all three of us, so I'm gonna be the backup.
We thank you for giving us this opportunity to provide you with a better understanding of our request for the upgraded porta-potties at Porterfield Park with some modular facilities. In consulting the master plan that was approved by the school board in December of two thousand thirteen, uh, we wanted to provide a cost-effective and time-effective solution. Uh, it was important that we be fiscally responsible and that we properly manage our resources. Uh, and knowing the concerns associated with the current porta-potties, we wanted to consider a solution that could be, uh, in place by, uh, the two thousand eighteen football season, by next fall. Uh, we also considered priority needs of the instructional and safety, uh, needs at Orange County High School and did not want to recommend a solution that may pull financial resources from other CIP projects. So what I have prepared for you is a chart that will give you a comparison of two options as we saw it. We see the one option of leaving what we have in place not really being an option. So we have two options. One is a, um, site-built restroom and the other is a modular restroom. And this would be a lease purchase. Uh, please keep in mind that both of these, uh, this comparison, uh, they're both ADA compliant. Both the modular units as well as the site-built units are ADA compliant. They both include two buildings, uh, one behind the football stands and one down the first baseline near where there's a ticket booth currently. Uh, both meet building code requirements, although those requirements are different for both of these, uh, options. Uh, the modular, what the code says with that, it must meet or exceed what was originally in place. Uh, so currently we have eighteen porta-potties in place. Those eighteen porta-potties were met or exceeded what was in place with the, uh, the abandoned bathrooms. And then, um, the site-based, uh, the site-built based is, is all determined by an attendance of, uh, thirty-five-hundred fans. Neither of these include upgraded concession stands and neither of these proposals or cost analysis, uh, include a demolition of the current abandoned facilities of the, the cinder block building where the bathrooms are underneath of the stands that we don't use anymore. So with the site-built restrooms, uh, based upon a twenty-five-hundred in attendance on the home side and a one-thousand attendance on the visitor's side, uh, those are your required numbers for, uh, the stations and laboratories. Uh, forty-nine, and this is based on building code requirements because we'd have to upgrade, uh, if we put something permanent in place. It would require forty-nine of stations or toilets and sixteen lavatories or sinks on the home side and twenty and seven, uh, on the visitor's side of the baseball field. Uh, that's at an estimated cost of five hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And then the modular restrooms, again, this is gonna be, uh, a lease purchase. And this is a thirteen stations per modular unit, so a total of twenty-six stations. Again, that meets or exceeds what's in place now. Uh, estimated cost of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars with a resale down the road of approximately sixty-five thousand with a net cost of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Is that per unit or is that for two units?
That's for two units.
That's the total.
Total for the two units.
How long is that, when you say resale? How many years are you talking about using it?
The useful life of one of the modulators is ten to fifteen years, Mr. Frame, and we anticipate about nine years of use based on the current, uh, CIP, the current master plan that's in place.
So you're, I, I'm, I'm trying to get. I, in the, in the case of the modulators, you're going, your, your pricing yields twenty-six stations. Uh, and, and we can, we can do that and meet code.
Correct.
But there's a big difference between twenty-six stations, and if I'm reading the, the one above it.
Sixty-nine.
Yeah, versus sixty-nine stations.
That's correct.
And I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get my, trying to envision the, the, the impact. I mean, it's one thing to be code compliant. I'm not against being code compliant necessarily, or always. Sometimes. But, but I, I'm, I'm just thinking about the, you know, the, 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 the operational impact, you know. Part of the objective here is to solve a problem. And I guess my question that I'm trying to get around to is, will, will twenty-six solve the problem sufficiently? Or is the number really need to be sixty-nine? In order to have an apples-to-apples comparison, I, I don't, I don't have a good idea of how to manage, merge those two thoughts together.
Well, when we did that analysis, check, analysis to come up with these numbers, we, we did look at that. And I guess sometimes it's a matter, uh, Mr. White, of sometimes the, the code says, here's what you need to provide and you know that you can get by with this, but the code says this. Uh, we certainly feel that the, the twenty-six stations, when we look at what we have now, uh, would certainly meet the demand that we have there.
So you've been running with eighteen stations so far.
They're not overwhelmed generally at least.
No, sir.
And when you're looking at twenty-five-hundred and a thousand, what is the usual attendance? Are we getting those kind of numbers?
We are not getting those numbers, but what you have to base it on is the seating that is available.
Okay, but in terms of the actual demand, it's more like, how many people are there?
Twelve thousand, excuse me, twelve hundred?
So you're normally twelve hundred total versus thirty-five-hundred?
That's probably about right, yes, sir.
Well, what I find interesting is I was recently at Spotsylvania High School, had a football game over there. They have maybe a total of between male and female, maybe ten. And they weren't anywhere near overwhelmed either. It just, it's surprising what the codes you're requiring.
Ten, were they permanent or were they portable?
Oh, no, this is their, their permanent.
Their permanence, yeah, okay.
So, uh, the code certainly changed over the years. But I guess people.
Well, the other thing is you're looking at capacity all the time and most of the time it's never gonna be capacity.
We would hope, Mr. Goodwin, that it would be.
Well, yes, that would mean that we were really good, but.
Are these two modular units the same size or is one larger than the other?
They're actually the same size.
And you say thirteen stations, you don't say, I can't believe I'm talking about this. It doesn't say how many lavatories there are, so is there one sink per station or where, where are we at on that? Just curious.
I'd have to pull the plan out, there's roughly about half as many sinks as there are stations. Proportionally as comparable. There's more stations on the female side, is that correct or? You know, I mean, are they different or?
It's a different configuration of stations. But both the, both the female side and the male side would have ADA compliance, uh, stalls.
And this is, this is, even though it's a mobile unit, it's hooked into the water and sewer.
And these figures include doing that work too.
And that, so these figures include that.
Bill ramps in front. You have steps on one side and coming up the other side, a platform at the top.
Now, these, this, uh, these units are, are, you say they're a lease purchase. Do we, how, how does that work in terms of, do we pay all the money upfront? Do we pay so much per year? How's that done?
It's, it's a, a two-payment lease purchase. We would pay the first payment upfront and then pay the second payment a year later and then they, we own them. It's like having a six-year lease purchase on a car, only it is a purchase agreement. But they're financing half the payment over a year for, I think it's about three percent interest versus if we bought it upfront.
Sorry, I'm throwing my sensitive back from the back, uh, but also we have looked at just a pure lease and felt that it was, uh, the best option was to go ahead with the lease purchase because I'll say that these gentlemen first said, well, we can sell it. I questioned that, but I did some research on that and found that there actually is a resale value for this even after multiple years.
So your porta-potties are not hooked into the sewer system, correct?
No, they aren't.
And what's the, uh, annual cost of, uh, servicing those?
Nine thousand dollars per year.
Okay.
We do, even the other options, that goes away.
It, it, it strikes me, I guess I'm not surprised, but the, what you call the site-built scenario, you know, the, the code would force us to build something that we don't need. That we don't need. And, and it could be even less needed depending on the future of the facility. In, in general, and so you, you, we, we don't have the option of building what we need.
Right.
And would that include moving all the dirt you're gonna have to move to actually put it somewhere?
That's a.
Because there's a very limited flat spot.
Yeah.
And then everything else is hill, I think that number.
Right, the flat spot, you do have Mr. Goodwin right behind the stadium. There certainly, that's a nice flat spot there. On the other side, there would be, some movement of dirt would certainly have to take place there.
How big are these things? Do we have any idea what the length and width is?
The larger of the two would be roughly a hundred by forty feet and the smaller one could be about twenty by fifty.
I thought they were the same size.
Oh, you're talking about.
The modular, I'm sorry, about twelve by fifty.
They're what?
Twelve by fifty.
Twelve by fifty?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and they would basically set on here, as you would have very little site work other than.
So you wouldn't have much, much, much dirt moving with these, with these modulars.
Yeah, I will step up. One of the points that we discussed also is if you, we were to build out, um, knowing the long-range plan that was approved for that area, you, you're building right now, they have to judge what capacity you need and that's why you get the code for that number. But knowing that facility and the way it's aligned, I would dare say by the time anybody wants to build a, a permanent facility there, you're also gonna look and say, what are we gonna do with what's already there? I don't need to have that, those sitting here when I have a nice new facility.
That much resource is tied up.
Right, and so we did not include, like we said, any change in that current area should you put the new in, but then you'd be sitting there looking at the old and saying, why didn't we fix that? So it, it, the cost, I think, would go up because I think you would put yourself in a position of saying, well, now that we have this really, really nice big bathroom structures, what are we doing with this here?
Is there a reason you don't want to continue with the porta-potties? Other than the obvious one?
You have any different opinions, dwell on that. Really, what do you think? Well, first, we've heard me why that's why. Well, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a reoccurring cost that you're gonna have annually. It's also an issue of, um, and, and a perception of who we are and what we stand for um, in terms of the pride that we have on a team and in a community. Um, and then I think this gives you a better, um, uh, location for people to, I mean, for hygiene purposes too. You're gonna have, um, running water there, you can have some things there that we currently don't have. So it, it, it makes the entire area, um, one that I think that is, is a pride point for the community. But I also think it is, um, it's not just convenience for people, I think it's just almost becoming more and more of a necessity.
Connected to water and sewer is, that's a bigger.
So what is the, uh, anticipated, uh, expense now? Uh, porta-potties, uh, they take care of the cleaning, you now got a cleaning expense.
We will have to adjust.
Cleaning and maintenance expense.
We know that that's, I mean, we're just gonna have to adjust to do it. We think that, um, I mean, we'll figure that out.
We did have that in either of your two alternatives.
But we know. But when we look at it, I mean, you think of the usage, some people say, oh, for this, but, uh, it, that's also something. We only have what about maximum like seven home games? We have graduation, I mean, it's limited times that we actually have to have folks there. It's not like it's gonna have to be maintained on a daily basis.
Well, it's limited times and, and really graduation might be the peak time. And then you have the, the half a dozen or so home football games and then baseball, where the attendance is nowhere near this number. As I say, unfortunately, we do not have, because of code, we do not have the option of building what we would, what we need.
Be the minimum, site-built.
Right, even to match the twenty-six.
Cause we're, we're, I mean, our term that we always use when we're looking at, uh, facilities and change, once codes have changed, you're grandfathered in. And as long as you, you know, maintain a certain level similar to what you had, it's considered grandfathered. But the minute you go in and do something structurally, um, for instance, if we said we just wanna go in and gut what we have and renovate and work on those, we sort of lose that ability to do so because, I mean, code has changed, it's changed significantly.
Are these locked when they're not in use?
Yes, it's true.
And what, what about winterization?
Yeah, we would shut them down, winterize, drain, would have everything fully winterized, so we'd have no expense during that period.
So there, there's no heating or AC built into these things?
Well, there is, but we would shut it off.
Okay.
After the last football game.
And Mr. Frame, you asked about leaving what we have. Uh, I was on the committee that, uh, interviewed for athletic directors for our county. And two of the candidates said, the first thing I want to see done as a AD is to see new facilities at Porterfield Park.
Really?
Because it's an embarrassment to you.
Okay.
And that spoke pretty strongly.
Okay.
From someone from the outside.
Now, you, you talk about these things going on, um, framework there, uh, they are skirted, right?
Yes.
Because we all watch the little munchkins run around and we don't need the munchkins underneath the toilet.
You're talking about the four-legged or the two-legged?
Boe.
It's hard to tell apart sometimes.
Boe, yes, no, we don't want, we wanna prevent that.
Just make sure I understand that because of the, the large difference between code and twenty, and the number twenty-six, it, you, you, you feel comfortable that twenty-six not only technically gets us around the code because of grandfathering, but, but twenty-six actually will solve the problem?
Having been at ballgames now, I don't see people standing in line at Porterfield, no, whether that's because.
They don't wanna use it. Have you looked behind them?
Well, it's because they don't want to, they don't need to, I'm not sure which that is.
Yeah, but I mean, if your, if your code requires for thirty-five, sixty-nine for thirty-five-hundred people and we got roughly a third that actually attended, the twenty-six is about a third of that.
It looks like it oughta work, yeah.
And it, that doesn't say that you won't go there sometime and have lines because it's, it's, um, as, as we've discussed in our deliberations about this, you know, uh, I've been to concerts before and, you know, people take breaks at certain times. So at halftime, you're gonna see some more people there than just the ebb and flow, um, during the game. So it, you might have people waiting in line, but I would contend that they'd rather wait in line, um, a, a little bit.
Oh, sure, go to a game at John Paul Jones Arena, you're gonna wait in line at halftime.
You are, it's a.
Male or female.
Though I will say to that, this past Friday night when the band was performing at halftime, there were few people getting up to go get concessions.
That's true.
All right, I'm okay with this. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
Any other questions?
It looks like you've. It looks like you've, no, I think we, uh, I think that's good.
We, we just, we wanted to have a kind of a behind the scenes explanation for how you all arrived at that, so.
We, we fully understand that because we've had a lot of discussion and looked, and we quite frankly looked at as many options as, as we could think to explore. And I know that Tom, that Doug brought, you know, we all were going to try to Google and look to get a picture of one. See what does this thing look like, um, so that, um, that we could feel confident that it's what we need and not just a patch. But we think it's something that you can, um, will, will serve us well for many years and, and quite frankly, just didn't want to even consider investing in something that X number of years down the road. You'd say, why did you build one that big? You never needed that many.
Does it come in orange and blue?
We might agree or disagree with code, but eventually, right?
Once they make the second payment, it does.
The two thirty, is that basically two equal payments or how is it?
It's, uh, two payments of, of about ninety thousand. And then we have forty thousand dollars in there in the first year, which is part of our one thirty carryover item that would cover the site work and the, uh, connections to sewer water electricity. And the second year, it's another ninety thousand payment plus, uh, a little bit more putting gravel down, kind of the finishing touches would occur presumably in July of twenty eighteen after the fiscal year changes. So that's why our request is divided into the hundred thirty that's in carryover and then the hundred that's in this, uh, current request.
But all of that gravel and so forth would be in place prior to the use of the farm.
Are, are these, I, I take it that there are, uh, th- these units have, uh, sort of top of the line, middle of the line, bottom of the line? Is this, are these units that are, that are, that sort of strike a, a balance?
I don't think they're porta potties.
They're, they're, what you're describing is a Chevrolet, not Cadillac, but, but not, uh.
Not something else.
Not a Ugo? I think we have the Ugo.
Or a Pinto or all of those.
Hey, hey, I had a Pinto now, so.
I mean, I think if we're gonna do this, we, we should pick something that, you know, it, it, it looks like an enhancement. It doesn't look like, uh, we've taken a step back.
Yeah, the interiors will be quite nice, vinyl tile, uh, true fixtures and that's.
Bright, plenty of lighting.
No chandeliers. I, I mean, in case you haven't been one, there are some chandeliers, so.
All right, so do we need a motion on this or?
No, we just, this is just informational, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that being done, we move on to the consent agenda. Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, five A, new business, acceptance of navigation easement, Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Sorry to squeeze this in the last moment, but we did, uh, as you know, we've been trying to, uh, get through this phase of the structural projects. Right now, we're working on making offers for navigation easement acquisition. We have a willing landowner, um, so I wanted to try to get it in front of you guys, especially since we only meet once in November. I attached the, uh, proposed purchase agreement and the deed. They've all been signed by the owner. I have the originals with me, so I am seeking your approval. And also attach the, uh, resolution, um, for accepting the deed. So if you find all that acceptable, uh, we'd like to try to move forward with it. And, uh, certainly answer any questions. I'm gonna add also, because I anticipate this might be the question, the offer, the purchase offer is for the appraised value that was determined, uh, when we surveyed and appraised the property. It's not, it's not a dollar additional, it's the exact number. And I already have approval from the FAA to make these offers based on the appraisal.
Is this perpetual or is there a time limit? I didn't get a chance to look.
There's no time limit. It's, it's, uh, forever.
Okay.
I would make the motion.
Seconded. No motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Aye, I see no old business. Department Director Constitutional Officer Reports, Presentation of Working Draft, Kaplan Improvement Program, Glenda.
Stephanie is actually gonna go over, um, the draft of the CIP with you. There are a few items we haven't quite made our target for, um, FY nineteen in terms of, um, the minimum funding. Well, we've made the minimum funding, but we have a few additional projects. We haven't, uh, worked into that amount at this point, but I'll, I'll let Stephanie tell you more.
So what you have before you is the working draft. Um, these are all of the ongoing renewal projects that we have included in previous CIPs as well as, uh, new requests for this year. Um, and to help better point out the new requests, if you'll flip to the last section that has our project detail reports, everything new this year will show up right in front because we haven't assigned it a project code yet. So everything in this front section that doesn't include a project code, our new requests that we've added this year, and with the help of our colleagues at the schools, um, we actually were able to include, um, their projects in there this year in detail. So you have all of that information as well this year. And, um, really Brian wanted me to pass this out and, um, point out a few items, um, for you all to consider and think about. In the next few weeks, we'll be scheduling one-on-one, uh, meetings to go over this in detail with you. And then I'll be bringing back a revised draft the first meeting in December. But a few items that are above our target this year, um, are the Town of Orange Fire EMS Station. Um, please note that the figure that we included in this working draft is a estimate based on some, um, preliminary, um, spaces that were conducted in the last few years. We have not received bids or, or anything of that nature. It's a pure estimate. Um, there are two new requests from, um, the schools this year, um, the roof for Gordon Barber and the, um, lease purchase for the temporary restrooms at Purple Park. Um, there's the Gordon Building Elevator Modernization.
I, I hope that means replacement. I hope modernization means a new one.
Per Aaron, it's not necessarily all new, but the components, the gears, all of those things would be new, yes. Um, so there, there's more information in the project detail section, but they're not necessarily ripping out every single, uh, piece of metal that's in there, but they're replacing the gears. Also, um, I think there were some building code issues with the fire, um, suppression system or fire alarm system in there. Um, he does have extensive details and when we meet one-on-one, I actually have a quote from the company that outlines everything, um, that's included in that.
Can I add one thing? When you step into the elevator, you won't notice because what we didn't pay for is a modernization of the, of the cab.
Of the car?
I mean, that, I just didn't see a point of that cost. But outside of that, everything in the shaft and everything above is the.
Gonna have new engine, new transmission, new drive shaft.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, but the interior, the look is.
Right.
Except for the display.
Ugo cracked vinyl.
Ugo interior, but, but Chevrolet mechanic. All right.
Okay.
Um, we also, um, additionally have this year the replacement roof for the, um, Rurutin Building in Unionville. And, um.
Please.
And, um.
Yeah, who put that in there?
An emergency, um, flasher system for, um, to, uh, Rescue Station Twenty-One and the Temporary Fire EMS Station is at your port to let oncoming traffic know when our folks are coming in and out. And, um, another project that is, that Brian wanted to include that is, um, TBD, TBD completely. We have, we have no cost estimates. He just wanted to bring it in front of you to let you know that it's something that we're working on, is the Historic Clerk's Office Building renovation. Okay, so the, those are the main things that we wanted to point out and.
These, these new items, uh, are the, are they all in the first year or are they straight out, so stretched out?
They are stretched out, yes, sir. I just wanted you to be able to see some of the new requests, cause several of the new items, for example, for Fire EMS, um, we have in there the replacement cycles as well, but they're new to the CIP.
Okay.
Thank you. We look forward to discussing them in detail with you later.
All right. Uh, duh, 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 duh. Economic Development Quarterly Report, Phil.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to be able to provide an update of what economic development activities have been going on since my start towards the end of August. This won't be a full quarterly report, but, um, just kinda, Brian wanted me to touch on some of the activities that we've been doing. So, um, so since I began, uh, the first thing I did was get out and try to get to know the community. I met with nearly all of you to, uh, get an idea of your perspective of economic development and, um, how it's worked in the past, what's worked well and what hasn't, um, kind of try to identify the need for improvement so that we can begin working on those. I'm also gathering opinions from the EDA, obviously. Their input was very, very helpful. Um, meetings with the towns and, uh, the Orange Downtown Alliance has helped me to understand kind of that relationship between the county and, uh, both towns and how, uh, we really need to work together to fill vacancies in the towns. It's gonna be a team effort there. Uh, we participated in multiple ODA strategic planning sessions, um, to kind of, uh, give our input there so their plan really aligns well with ours. I think that's important for, for both of our plans to, to really work well together.
What areas you to consider are aligning?
Between the, well, so theirs is still in development, but a lot of the, um, input that we gave was working towards leveraging the internet, the broadband, um, component and really kind of getting some coworking spaces on this end of the county. So we've got common ground over towards Locust Grove. But I think it's important that we kind of balance that out a little bit so that the towns are, um, included in that.
The town, are the ODA interested in that?
Um, uh, they are, yeah. They were more focusing on kind of retail and, um, really the aesthetics of the way the downtown should look, which is important. But I was kind of focusing more on, uh, making sure the infrastructure was there and everything, uh, for economic development purposes was kind of aligning well with them. But their, their plan seems to be more focused on aesthetics and those, those sort of things, so. So hopefully, yeah, we can, we can really help, help get some economic development into that plan. We've been interacting with multiple state organizations, uh, with the EDP especially. They had some representatives come down and, um, give us some information on their newly formed Business Retention and Expansion Program, which I'm really excited about. It's a, a pot of money that incentivizes companies to grow where they are rather than, um, move elsewhere. So that's, that, and the barriers, it's similar to the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund, but the barriers are lower. So it's kind of incentivizes folks to grow where they are, which is good for Orange County in my opinion. Um, we also helped them develop their partner protocols, which is part of their strategic plan. Um, and that lays out exactly how the EDP is gonna work with, uh, regional and local organizations for economic development. So it's really cut and dry what, um, their process is for that and how it interacts with us. Also with the EDP, we participated in a familiarization tour with the, a group called the European, uh, European American Investment Council. And this, this is a group of site selection consultants, um, from various European nations to educate us on, on how to recruit those companies who are interested, foreign companies are interested in investing in the United States. And, you know, their workforce systems are different, so it's just a way to kind of make what we have look good to them or, you know, more attractive to them, so that we got some pretty good pointers there. The Virginia Department of Agri- Agriculture and Consumer Services came and, um, gave us an overview of all their programs, um, that promote, uh, the development of the ag and forestry industries, which, um, Orange County is aligned to grow in. Also along those same lines, I attended the Governor's Summit on Rural Prosperity. And we've got some good trends on what other rural localities are, um, what their development trends are across the nation, not just in Virginia. So that's a good kind of base, baseline for us to, to judge ourselves on and where maybe we might wanna start looking into. From a regional perspective, we've been working a lot with, um, the Go Virginia Initiative, just really kind of trying to stay ahead of that and, uh, educated. Uh, we've been working with multiple regional economic development partners, kind of brainstorming some different ideas on how we can collaborate on projects, cause that's the, that's the whole idea behind that initiative, is to work together, kind of pull your resources so that you can really attract some good businesses in. And I think we've got some good, good ideas going, which we can, um, we can discuss at a later date. Been working closely with the Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development, my previous employer. Um, so actually, one of the meetings that they hosted was at the I, IIHS crash test facility in Green. And Rose and I got to see a brand new, probably about sixty-five thousand dollar Alpha Romeo get completely smashed. So it was a little heartbreaking, honestly, it was, but it was really, it was a really cool experience. And also continuing to work with the Central Virginia Small Business Development Center on, uh, various workshops and, uh, counseling sessions, which they've held three over the last, uh, three months in this room here. Um, and they've got two scheduled for next month, some counseling sessions. Been working, uh, to develop a relationship with the Orange County Public School System. Uh, met with Dr. Tanner and, um, several of their career and technical, um, education program representatives. Um, I've joined their Business Advisory Committee to try to help connect the business needs with, uh, the training programs that they have out there at the high school. Kind of let those needs really help to drive what, what they're training over there. And of course, I've, oh, also, we're gonna be participating in Manufacturing Day at, uh, Rigid Products tomorrow. So, um, the several, I think it's four classes from the high school are gonna go to Rigid and just tour their operation. The idea behind it is to pique their interest in manufacturing as a career option. Um, so hopefully that'll, that'll, um, and I believe they've been doing that for the last couple of years. I'm not sure exactly when that started. And of course, I've been working to develop a relationship with the, with the businesses that are here. Um, been attending, uh, as many networking events as I can that are here in the county. Also visiting them at their place of business to ask questions and try to understand what the challenges are and see how we can possibly help them succeed. We've worked several projects, including the Quad County Business Summit, um, which took place on October fourth. And that was a, a program that actually Tommy and Rose had started last year. This is the second time. This year, we had, um, twice as many attendees and almost twice as many exhibitors. Uh, we had over two hundred attendees and sixteen exhibitors. And this is just a great way for businesses to understand what resources are available to them right here locally. And they can actually talk to the person that's gonna deliver their service. So, you know, it develops that relationship right off the bat. It's a really great program. Some due diligence, due diligence work, uh, we kicked off the engineering work being performed at the King Site, which was partially funded by the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program. Um, so that, that work is, has started to, um, take off. The work at the Lee Industrial Park, the engineering work by Timmons has been completed and their findings have been resubmitted to DEQ, so hopefully we can get our stormwater management plan for the park finalized to really know how much developable, how much developable land that detention pond can hold. So we really know what we can do after, um, we get bored back to DEQ, hopefully next, next month or so. Timmons did note that everything looked promising, so we, we should be in good shape. With Montpelier, we've been working a lot with them. Um, we had VDOT come out and look at some of their roads. They're looking to, um, enhance their ability to have some economic activity in there. And, uh, the road network isn't great for that right now. So VDOT's right now working on a proposal for, so they understand what costs and they're gonna be pretty substantial. For sure, I mean, they're, they've got a long way to go. But, um, and they've also got a mountain biking and, um, hiking trail system that they're working on. We provided some support for that. And so of course, there's, uh, while all that's going on, we've had some prospect activity. Uh, first thing Rose and I did was sit down and go through the, uh, tracking report that her and Tommy used. And we, we identified the ones that were no longer interested in Orange or had picked another place, um, or were simply unresponsive. So we cut them out, stopped working on them. And we've currently got twenty-six prospects, six of them new since August and we've performed two site visits. That, that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
What, uh, any, uh, comments on the adequacy of labor for the businesses that we already have?
Yeah, there, it's not adequate. That's pretty much when I ask businesses what challenges there are, that's across the board. First, the first one is finding good workers who will stay for more than, let's say, four to five months. So turnover is a big problem. And what seems to be happening is they're just trading, trading, uh, around. So you poach from one, this guy, this business over here poaches from you and it's just a vicious cycle. So, um, hopefully getting in, um, the high schools and things like that. And hopefully, we can develop some pipelines from our high schools to the community colleges, back to our employers. That, I think that would be a great, um, circle to, to have there. And it starts with understanding the business needs and what skill sets they, they require, so. That's a, a tough ta- problem to tackle, but it's, it's.
Are the businesses providing any, uh, information or, or assistance with regard to what the training program should be at the school and G, and GCC or community colleges?
They all have mentioned that. They all have mentioned that um, they're involved with them in some capacity, but um, I think that communication could be strengthened. Um, the pipelines could be strengthened there, um, and I, I think that our office can have a lot to do with that. Um, if we understand what their needs are, I think we need to have a great relationship with the high schools and community colleges so that we can. We can help develop that curriculum and, and give that input um, on behalf of the business community.
We, we, we're still finding a, a strange set of statistics, I gave a presentation a couple of weeks ago and to a group. And one of the things I talked about was the labor force and I, I, it, it's a, it's an amazing set of numbers when you think about. We have roughly ten thousand five hundred jobs in the county. But there's only, in round numbers, thirty-five hundred of those jobs are filled by people who live and work in Orange County. Thirty-five out of the ten thousand five hundred. Um, almost ten thousand workers leave the county every day for work. And almost six thousand come into the county for work, so there's this, this chessboard effect of things that are going on, people are going and coming. I don't quite know what to make of that, but it, 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 it contributes to the issue that we constantly hear from our employers. In terms of the labor force, it, it's a, it, it's a big set of moving wheels that uh. That, you know, when, when, when there's only thirty-five hundred people that live and work in Orange County, uh, that, that's a significant challenge.
Seems like, yeah, there's some opportunity to keep some folks here, and with the businesses screaming that they can't find workers, obviously the jobs are there. So yeah, there's, there's a disconnect somewhere.
That's something else too, is um, I have a tremendous amount of constituents ask why. We've let some of the larger uh, employment businesses go elsewhere. And not been out there trying to recruit them, and I've tried to explain to them, you have to have. A workforce or a workforce pool that you can draw from in order for these businesses to come and be successful. We don't want to bring businesses here and have them fail because we can't provide a reasonable workforce.
That always seems to be the business's primary interest, I mean, they're looking for the incentives we give and, and some of the other stuff. But the biggest, the biggest kicker is uh, is the adequacy of a workforce.
Both in terms of numbers as well as skill.
Yeah, and I do know that both uh, Dr. Tanner and the school system and Germana. Have been working very hard to try to uh, develop a pipeline for uh. One of the existing businesses that are here primarily.
There's another i- interesting statistic that I think, I think is favorable, I, I looked at the last twenty-four months. Cause that's how it was reported, we had almost a hundred startups in the county in the last twenty-four months. Now, you know, the, the, the odds are against the startup, obviously, that's, that's been the case forever, but, but still, that, that's a hundred. Uh, situations where people were willing to take a chance and invest to whatever degree in Orange County. And start a new business, I mean, that's a, th- that's of, of the s- stats that are rattling around, that's one I think is, is pretty favorable. And I'm, I'm hoping that we, we have a way of, you know, encouraging that and, and assisting where we, where we can uh, with, with that group as well.
Sure, economic gardening is the term.
Yeah. That's a good, that's a good term.
But it, but it is an issue with the labor, I mean, I have seventeen where I am and with the last couple acquisitions. I now have six, or seventeen are from Orange.
Yeah.
But nobody's ever been able to tell me this is, this is a, an evergreen issue that comes up, nobody's ever been able to tell me if that's a s- really significant or not. Because, I mean, we're geographically, you know, California's got like thirty-five counties. And five times the land area of, of, of Virginia, we've got ninety some, so it's not, I mean, if somebody's living in Barbersville or Burr Hill. They're not really worried about a county line if they drive over a county line to get to their work, so. You know, I'm, my assumption is obviously it's happening the same way all around us, I mean, there's, there's a lot of people from Madison driving to Orange. Or they're from Green driving to Orange and vice versa, so.
I mean.
Not sure how meaningful that is.
Well, you've got, if you look.
It does seem odd, but I'm just not sure what it means.
If you look at Locust Grove area, it's, it's uh, less distance to Fredericksburg and Culpeper than it is down to Orange, you know, in terms of.
Oh sure, our, our geometry is, is a factor without a question.
But we do know that they're here, so that, I mean, that's at least something to look at, I mean, that's a starting point for sure, but I mean, it is something that. To look into.
Well, the jobs to population number is not too bad, ten thousand five hundred jobs for a thirty-five thousand population, I mean, that's a. That passes the giggle test at least.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you Phil. All right, uh, county attorney's report, I see there's nothing. County Administrator Report, we start off with the appointment for the two thousand seventeen Vaco Annual Meeting.
Yeah, I figured I wouldn't have much to say, but just a reminder that um, the Vaco Annual Business Meeting is coming up at the end of the Vaco Conference. Um, in November, and they're requesting that you all um. Designate someone to vote on, on your behalf this year.
I would nominate Jim Crozier.
Second.
Has he done it before?
Yes.
I think so.
Do we feel he's up to the task?
He's up to the task.
In fact, my, my first year up there representing the county, I sort of stirred it up a little bit, I don't think they really liked me being.
Good. Imagine that.
Go figure.
Who, who's going this year?
I am.
So, are you going Jim?
Do we actually need a vote on this, or?
I made the motion.
Second motion, the second, any further discussion?
Okay, no.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're it. Again, all right, uh, next would be the legislative priorities for two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, the county administrator had prepared this as an update. Um, concerning the board's um, legislative priorities for two thousand eighteen. The board had been given um, the two thousand seventeen legislative priorities just for a review. And also had heard from Mr. Eldon James, who is the um, legislative liaison for the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional. Um, Commission, and since then, the uh, Vaco Virginia Association of Counties has distributed. Its preliminary legislative program. Um, the attachments were not in your agenda package, but I think you've all received them tonight. The uh, Vaco's preliminary program as well as copy of the uh, regional. Um, priorities that uh, Mr. James went over. Brian is planning on um, continuing to review these. The um, the Vaco Conference will be November eleventh through the thirteenth. So the plan is that anything that comes out of the conference could be incorporated into a draft. That he would then present to the board on the December fifth regular meeting. And all of that is just provided for the board's information, no action is necessary at this time.
Well, I think that we could almost scale this into a small sentence, if you mandate it, pay for it.
It'd solve a lot of problems if they followed that.
Yeah. Okay.
Will you be attending, uh, which ones are you attending, I'm gonna be attending probably the uh. Meeting on uh, social services, you tend the one on, who tends the one on transportation? You, you're on, one of, I'm also on government uh, operations, as long as they don't have their meetings simultaneously.
I haven't, I haven't looked at it yet. Whichever one, we, we all need to go, we'll just work around.
You're, you're going too, Tim? Oh, I didn't see your hands are up.
All right, uh, then consolidated public safety facility update. That would be the, the other Brian, David.
There's more than one?
Apparently, there's three of them.
And they're all here but one.
That's right, the main ones out here, um, first of all, the uh, we have not closed on the property, I'm sure you guys all know that. For various reasons, Ms. Tanner was unable to um, attend the closing last week. I believe that our, our new estimate is sometime next week, hopefully we'll close on the, on the property. As far as the facility goes, um, we're working on the schematic design, I can tell you that we're far enough into it. That we, we've been able to determine that the utilities are gonna work as far as the, the gravity flow on the sewer. We had talked about potentially might have to put a pump station in, but we've, um, we've gotten to the point where, where we're working through the site issues. Everything looks pretty, pretty good there, um, still got a ways to go on the building, but we'll be ready for the, for the uh, work session on the fourteenth of November. Uh, with you folks. Lastly, I'll say that, I, I mentioned earlier in the meeting, we've um, talked about the schedule. But to be quite honest, until we get through the fourteenth. I don't know how accurate that's gonna be, so um.
On the fourteenth, or, or, do we have a start time for that, or are we starting early?
Four o'clock.
And we have to be.
With the airport to do it.
And when do we have to be at Lake of the Woods?
No, this is, Lake is a different day.
Different day. Oh, okay, I had in my mind, we were, that's what I was concerned about, we were gonna do it the same day, or try to do it the same day as the meeting.
Woods meeting is on a Wednesday.
November eighth.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, fine.
So, four o'clock is the start date, hopefully it works everybody, um, and then once, once we get through that. See what kind of comments and, and issues we have from that meeting, then I think we'll have a better chance of developing a more accurate study. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And then lastly would be the request for a speed study on Route six eleven.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in front of you, um, you'll find an email from a concerned citizen. Um, that was sent to um, Chairman Goodwin, um, citizen of his district. And they expressed um, concerns with the speed of travelers and safety on Route six eleven. Specifically the Raccoon Ford Road portion. Um, there's a part of that road that is Zora Road, I believe, and then.
It turns into Zora.
Part of it is uh, Raccoon Ford Road, if you read the email from the constituent, it provides a, a greater detail. Um, I think the Zora Road um, not only has painted center lines. But it has some speed limit um, signage and more safety um, signage posted on that road. So they are requesting your consideration that V Dot conduct a speed and safety study on the Raccoon Ford Road portion. Um, understanding that their request is for a reduced speed limit and increased safety signage. Um, it will, they have requested thirty miles an hour. Um, right now it is an unposted road, which um, is a fifty-five mile an hour statutory speed limit. So they are requesting um, thirty miles an hour and then possibly some signage for some sharp turns. Or areas with poor disability and even possibly painted center lines to help um, control some of the speed as well. So if you would like, um, there's a motion at the bottom that you can adopt. Uh, whereby I would put together a resolution and a letter and we would send it to the Louisa Resident Administrator for them to conduct. Um, I know the speed studies are running a little bit behind at this time. Um, cause I think he's just getting recommendations um, that he will be providing to us for the Route fifteen speed study. That you all took action on a month or so ago, probably two months ago, so. Um, we can get it together and, and send it to the resident administrator if that's what you would like.
I've been down that road in an ambulance, it, it can use a reduced speed.
Yeah, that, that section of it is narrower than Zora Road and.
Yeah, Zora was improved, widened and a lot of improvements maybe like a number of years ago. Soon as it uh, goes into your district, sir, it uh, deteriorates rapidly.
Well, it's kind of like six seventeen, as you feed it on a twenty is all nice from the greenhouse up, but you leave the greenhouse and go back to where I used to live and. Yeah.
Exactly.
I'll make the motion.
I'll, I'll even second it on that one, so. Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, six o'clock, any board comments?
I, I would just say that I, I got a, a request from a constituent that um, the. Intersection of two thirty-one and twenty is, is of course up for the, the smart scale roundabout, but that's gonna take several years to get done. And their request is that uh, V Dot look at doing some um. Speed bumps on two thirty-one and maybe some signage to kind of deal with that, to try to slow, slow that down and. But because obviously between now and when the roundabout is done, there's still gonna be a lot of people going through there. That is one of the worst uh, intersections around, uh, so uh. My plan was to, to forward that on to um, our resident engineer. Without objection from the rest of the board, I'm gonna forward that request and let him deal with it.
Yeah, I, I, I look both ways quite carefully when I.
Oh, I, yeah, I, you know, I'm, I'm, my eyes are going back and forth when I'm on twenty and I'm approaching that because. It'd be real easy to get wiped out there.
And everybody knows who has priority in the circle.
Well, the circle will be fine, we'll get the circle there, you know, but uh, people on two thirty-one right now, if they're not real attentive, they just bust on through there.
This is true.
That's all I have.
All right, anybody else have any? Can I call you, uh, case, any question on informational items? Any appointments?
Yes, um, actually, uh, Crystal Hale resigned from the planning commission due to her new employment. And I would like to uh, nominate Jennifer Boyer of Rhodesville, she is the co-owner of uh, Deep Roots.
Oh, okay.
With her husband, so.
You nominated both of them?
No, just, just Jennifer, her husband uh, has already made it very clear that he stays out of her way.
Smart. All right, any others? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do the one last thing, we'll be done then, pretty much uh, schedule the annual meeting at Dogwood Village on Tuesday, December nineteenth. Is that good with everybody?
Okay.
I assume that's the regular board meeting in December.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Now, are we, I forget, are we doing one the first Tuesday and the third, is that how we're doing it in December?
Yes, sir, in December, it's the first, I'm sorry.
The fifth, right?
Yes, December. The fifth and the nineteenth, which is the first and third Tuesday.
So are we doing the whole meeting there, or are we just doing the uh, uh, going, doing the meeting at, at five and then mo- going there for dinner?
Yes, sir, you'll, you'll have your meeting here starting at five.
Okay.
I don't know at this time if there will be a four o'clock work session, but your regular meeting will start at five. And we'll um, leave for around six o'clock for dinner over there and you'll conclude for the evening there.
Okay.
All right. Everybody fine with that? Okay, we're good, in that case.
Ready?
Can read the magic words, sir.
All right, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss and close meeting the following matters. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public body. Consultation will legal counsel employed retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisional legal advice by such counsel. Where pursuant to sections two point two thirty seven eleven eight three and A A to the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved. Board Supervisor of Orange County is hereby authorized to discuss or set matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
So move.
Second it.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. We're in closed.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. And that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. White?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Okay. This point is seven o'clock. It's time for public comment. Is anyone signed up?
No, sir, not for public comment.
Okay, call for public comment. In that case, we move on to the public hearing. Special use permit by Linda and David Newland to keep five horses, up to five horses and two donkeys on their piece of property. Oh, you're gonna do it? Okay.
Yes, sir.
I noticed you were lounging in the back there.
Well, good evening to the board, and I'm just gonna give a brief overview of SUP seventeen dash zero five. This is a special use permit application that was submitted to the county by Linda and David Newland, and this is for the keeping of up to five horses and two companion donkeys on a thirty point four three acre property that is zoned for limited residential use and is addressed to one one four four one Jones Mill Road. This application went through the typical SUP review process. Uh, we worked with the applicant to make sure that the application was complete before forwarding it to the Application of New Committee for their comment and expertise. With that in hand, we looked at the conference of plan and the zoning ordinance to make sure that this was appropriate use for the area. We do recommend conditional approval of this application. It appeared before the Planning Commission on October the fifth. Um, one person did speak in favor of the application. Uh, two people did not speak in favor. They were concerned about the noise that would come from, uh, the donkeys, and that is a concern that we believe we've addressed in the conditions for the application. So, since then, we have not received any comments except for one phone call concerned that this was a rezoning for apartments. Other than that, nothing else. So, with that, I will open the floor up to you, if you have any questions.
I just have one question.
Sure.
What's the difference between a donkey and a companion donkey?
The companion donkeys are much more easy to get along with. A regular donkey can be a real jackass. And I speak with some authority on that.
Not a companion, huh?
I was just curious.
Glad I could clear that up for you.
I'm still curious, but.
Thomas, do you happen to know the, the zoning history of, of this property? I, I ask that because, as you're probably aware, Jim and I in particular are going through a situation in, in another part of the county where there's zoning in place that was put there as part of some, uh, the initial rollout of zoning in the, back in the nineteen sixties, and, you know, there are parcels that have, you know, that are part ag, part residential, part industrial, same parcel, and it, it was just done with a fairly big paintbrush and, uh, without, with, without regard to what the actual use is. Do you know what the zoning history of this, this area, not necessarily just this parcel, but this area is? Is this somewhat the same thing, or was this intentionally rezoned at some point to, to the residential? You have, have any clue?
I believe it's been zoned for R one since as far as our land books go back, in the Planning and Zoning Department. Why it was zoned R one, I'm not sure. That's just what it's been.
Do you know, Mark, how many extensive?
Well, I, I know to an extent, yes, and you'll notice that the land around it is, is also zoned, you know, the other parcels. Uh, when they initially, uh, adopted the zoning ordinance in nineteen forty-seven, they in fact, and I don't remember the exact parameters, but it was land within a mile of the town of Orange would be zoned a certain way, uh, which this is pretty much there. So, I would imagine this goes back to, uh, to nineteen forty-seven, yeah. Particularly given the fact that there's so much of it out there. It's not just one, you know, parcel. That's what made me curious. What is, what, what is fourteen and fourteen A here? What are those two little one acre parcels? Are they?
Oh, those are, they have individual homes on them, and they are owned by the current property owner. So, they are residential use.
Okay, so those are, those are, uh, separate parcels that have been cut off of the, of the large parcel at some point. And they're both over an acre, and that's what the, that's what the R one requires, is an acre, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, that was, that has nothing to do with this application. I was just curious about it. Okay.
Any further questions? All right, thank you. Do the applicants wanna say anything?
I'm Linda Newland, um, my husband David, and we're out of Fairfax, Virginia. Come, we would like to come down to enjoy the rural aspects of, uh, Orange County and have been looking, and we have not yet purchased this property because we are contingent on approval of this SUP to go to closing on Thursday. We've been looking for a place like this just to, and we really wanna maintain the character of the property almost exactly as it is, except just give it a little bit of investment, bring it up to, uh, you know, give it a little love. It's a little tired, and it, uh, we'd really like to make it a very pretty property. So, that's really, the intent is not to do anything drastic with it, just kind of, uh, give it a bit of a boost. We've agreed to the conditions that were recommended by the planning group, um, which basically just keep the animals further away from the residential property. There's enough land there really that you can look off down the pastures and, and be completely away from the other properties. So, if you have any, I don't know if you have any questions for us as far as what we were looking to do, but, um, we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, okay. Well, in that case, open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Andy Hutchison, one one five two two Jones Mill Road.
I, I just would like to, uh, say that, uh, I certainly support the Newlands' application, and, uh, the only thing I feel sorry for them about is if they wanna add some other livestock or animals, I would assume they're gonna have to come through the process again, which is kind of unfortunate, I would think, for them, but, uh, I just want y'all to know that I do support, uh, support the application. Thank you.
Okay. No other speakers? Close the public hearing. Gentlemen?
I would move that we approve with one, uh, with one change in the, uh, in the condition number one, and this is just to kind of make it a little clearer. Currently, it reads, uh, uh, on any portion of the applicant's property located between the house addressed Jones Mill Road and the southernmost boundary of the property, and I would just change that to read within four hundred feet of the southernmost boundary, southernmost boundary of the property. It, it essentially is, adds up to the same thing. Uh, I did my measuring on GIS last night to see where that line would fall, and it would fall just the other side of the house, so, you know, I, I know in a rural county, and we're talking about five horses and two donkeys, companion or otherwise, uh, why are we worried about this? And, you know, there are people living next door that bought it as a residential property, so, uh, and since the Newlands don't, don't have a problem with it, I would just ask that we change that wording, uh, so that it's a little bit clearer, uh, so we don't get into something down the line where the houses, the house might be gone, and so then what do we do, you know? So, that would be the, the change, but I, I would move approval based on that change.
Okay, I have a motion. In a second, approve as modified. Is any further discussion?
I do have one question.
Yeah.
Under the, uh, it's page two of two, and it's, let me see what it, I guess it's the Planning Commission, uh, approval document, item three, says uses, and it has a, has a sentence in there after identifying the five, up to five horses and two companion donkeys, and then it says, "These words, other similar animals may be permitted as determined by the zoning administrator to be consistent with the intent of this SUP." Okay, anybody wanna tell me what?
What that means?
What that means? Or what we have in mind, or where that's gonna go, or, uh, what did the planning commission?
I think the intention of that is that in case they wanted to switch out, um, an animal with something that would be equally non-problematic.
A cow instead of a donkey?
Perhaps. Um, that would give us the ability to do that without requiring them to go through the SUP process again.
Well, but that's a good question. Would, would, would a, replacing one horse or one donkey with one cow, it, would that, would that meet the intent of it? I'm not, I, yeah, I know, I, 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 I went here with, at my own risk, I'd get, but.
Perhaps we should adopt a, uh, a calculator. Three goats equals one horse. Ten chickens equals one donkey.
Well, can I, can I make a suggestion that does clear it a little bit? Other, other animals may be substituted, and, and take out the word similar and permitted, and then we just say other animals may be substituted, unless we're worried that they're gonna bring an elephant or something, I mean.
Well, if they bring an elephant, they'll, they'll have their own set of problems feeding that thing, so. Not to mention all the guests going, look, there's.
Unless, unless it's a companion elephant.
I mean, in, 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 in the world of veterinarians, they, they, they have a group of animals they call pets, which are typically dogs and cats and these kinds of things.
The state defines livestock. Other livestock animals can, we could use the word livestock, which has a state definition.
Well, but then the vets also have what they call companion animals, which includes a horse, and presumably a donkey too, but a, an equine species. And, and I'm just trying to, I, I, I don't wanna have you backed into a corner or, or go away with an interpretation that, you know, might or might not fit with what we're.
Was that the planning commission came up with that wording, or is that the planning department?
I believe it was our department.
So, what did you all have in mind when you came up with it?
To be honest, the intent was in case they wanted, uh, four horses and a pony, I don't wanna have to go and say, well, this says you get four horses, and that's it.
Well, pony, pony is really not a separate, uh, pony is just a small horse. There is no legal definition between a pony and a horse.
What was your wording, Tom?
Well, a, and actually, I was just looking up the state definition of livestock, but, uh, I would just say it's, use the word substitute, that you can, that, that this, uh, other, and I would say livestock animals may be substituted, and you don't even need the determined by the zoning administrator as being consistent then, because, I mean, the state, uh, uh, the state definition of livestock, I think we're all, we would be okay with.
Can you read what it says? But, I mean, I, I'm just curious.
Livestock includes all domestic or domestic, domestic or domesticated bovine animals, equine animals, ovine animals, porcine animals, which is pig, right?
Yeah, see, that's the problem with livestock.
Livestock probably is not the best word for that.
It's probably, that's probably too broad.
Well, I, I, I think the, I, I don't, I mean, I understand.
It's selfish, too.
I, I understand what you're saying, Jim, but I don't.
Well, I don't have a fix either, right?
I don't think there's, I don't see a problem here. I really don't.
Just make sure that if we.
It's a similar animal, so, um, to me, that's, that's talking about goats, goats or llamas or alpacas or something like that. Uh, I don't, I don't think a pig fits there.
So, we're going with other similar animals may be substituted?
Other similar animals may be permitted. I, I would, you know, I don't.
I suggest the word substituted, 'cause the word permitted could be theoretically, say, on top of the thought.
Yeah, that's fine. Other similar animals may be substituted. Uh, yeah, I, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
I misunderstood your, your earlier comment.
And, and so we're going just other similar animals may be substituted, period, or still as determined by the zoning administrator?
To be consistent with the intent of the SUP. I think we leave that in there.
I don't have a problem with leaving that in there.
Okay.
If somebody complains, then the zoning administrator can go look at it and say, no, you know, we weren't. Hogs, hogs don't fall in that category. I, I, I amend my motion, uh, to substitute the word substitute in for permitted. Feel permitted.
All right, I have a motion in a second. But handle everybody's. In that case, do the roll call.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
Let there be donkeys and horses, similar like animals, uh, tyrannosaurs or other modified, uh, species.
Do you need a motion?
I would give you a motion to adjourn.
I'm not asking you that question. You stole it.